Okay, let's get started. I'd like to call it up order the Central Board of Education Board meeting for Monday, September 26, 2022. Ms. Sauber, could you call the roll, please? Mr. Dahl?
Here.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Here.
Dr. Rohr?
Here.
Mr. Schreier?
Here.
Megan Sparks? Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical, liberty, and justice for all.
May I please have approval of the agenda as presented, please?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Sauber, could you call your role, please? Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
We have no one for hearing out of the public, so we will put forward that part. Thank you all those who are in attendance. Board and administrative reports, there is no legislative report tonight. Student board graphs, do you have any?
How late did I go to the other two reports presented to power events last week? Talk right now.
Do we read all? Do you see our reports back? Ms. Sauber, do you happen to have a treasurer's report? Is he available? Oh, come on, Ms. Sauber. Just stick with the deed. Last slide, so a little bit quick. So, good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. This is the time here that we talk about our financial master plan for our general fund finances for the year. This will lead into our five-year forecast filing that you'll see on the November agenda in a couple of months. And we did talk about these items. Sorry about that. Tech glitch. We did talk about this last week at our work session, if you recall, for in point length to talk about it, so I wanted to review tonight for the public to also hear that conversation as well. So tonight on the agenda, we're going to talk about the financial master plan and also our monthly general fund rolling report. So some of the high-level key assumptions that we have that are going into the 10-year financial plan is, let's talk first of all, I'm going to show you five years tonight, but internally, as an administrative team, we look at 10 years of projections. And we do that because 10 years lets us just look at a longer term in terms of planning when we look at levy cycles, when we think about capital improvements, and how any of that stuff might impact our general fund expenses as well. The other thing that's a little bit different about our 10-year plan compared to the normal traditional five-year forecast is that we look at department budgeting instead of accounting. So when you see the five-year forecast in November, there's going to be a line for purchase services and a line for supplies and a line for capital outlay. For us, it's a little more important for us to look at curriculum expenses or for the business office expenses, also student services. And so we look at it by departments instead. It's just a little bit more meaningful to us as an administrative team and as a board as well. I wanted to just point out our personnel costs. We spent about 90% of our general fund on wages and benefits. We're a service industry. We employ people to teach students. And so every school is very heavy in wages and benefits. 90% is a little bit high, higher than what you might see in neighboring districts or in comparable districts, but the reason for that is because we have a very healthy permanent improvement fund that funds our capital needs. So like our buses, a lot of our HVAC improvements, some of our technology upgrades, parking lots, sidewalks, plumbing, all of those types of things, we're able to cover the majority of that out of the permanent improvement fund. If you were to add in the permanent improvement funds into our general fund budget, that's not how we report it, that doesn't get reported to the state, but that brings our wages and benefit percentage down to about 86%, which is a little bit closer to what I am familiar with in terms of it being an average for school district personnel costs. So from a revenue standpoint, we're using about a 1% increase in new construction. That is new funding for us in terms of our tax revenue. Whenever there's a new home built, we do see new revenue for that, and so we make sure that we incorporate that into our estimates. I want to just mention, I know we've talked about it a couple of different times, but May of 2022, we did pass the 10-year emergency renewal levy. All this did was stabilize our current level of funding and it just continued that $9.5 million on until 2033. And so just a reminder, that was not new or additional revenue to the district.
Laura, could I just ask you a question real quick, please? Can you give us the approximate total, yearly total of the permanent improvement fund, please?
We bring in about $4.5 million in permanent improvement revenue.
Thank you.
State funding is another piece of our revenue that we pay close attention to. It's a very small percentage, only about 12 or 13%, but it is significant in terms of keeping our operations going at a steady pace. We're on a guarantee, and so we're going to receive the same amount of money as what we received last year. The Fair School Funding Plan, we've had numerous conversations about that. You know, I don't know if that plan will be around in the next biennium. Next biennium starts next July, so about nine months away. And we'll start hearing a lot about that come January on what might or might not be happening with the next round of state funding. And then just to mention, again, these are just some of the high-level assumptions that go into the numbers that we're going to talk about. Our wages and benefits, we have our negotiations settled through 2024, so we'll keep an eye, you know, on that moving forward. We'll have to begin that process next year. And then operationally, we've had a lot of conversation internally about inflationary costs, supply chain issues. There's a lot of that that the people that are dealing with making the purchases or happen to kind of navigate, high prices, and then also delays in getting materials. So on the next slide, this is our five-year projection for 2023. I'm anticipating about $111 million in revenue, and our expenses are going to be around $115 million. And so I do believe we're going to enter that period of deficit spending that schools typically kind of ebb and flow in and out of that as new levies pass. And so if you look back at the historical information, for the last two years, we've had surplus. And so we built our cash balance up by $4 million in 2021 and $2.7 million last year. Those were surpluses for us. And so, like I said, we're going to likely enter a period here of some deficit spending. And so we're talking about that internally and will be coming to you in future meetings to discuss, you know, the plan to take care of that deficit spending. You'll see these numbers again, ordered just slightly different in November when we approved the five-year forecast. Before we move on to the monthly rolling report, does anybody have any questions? So what do we do with this plan once we have it in place? Do we put it in the binder and set it on the shelf and just ignore it then the rest of the year? No, we do not do that. I think it's important that everybody realize that every single month, you as board members are looking at these numbers. And it's in a little bit of a different format. It's called the monthly general fund rolling report. And so what is it? We take our current fiscal year, so I mentioned $111 million in revenue and $115 million in expenses, and I break those down in monthly estimates. And so taxes, we collect those twice a year. State funding is pretty consistent month by month. And then, so I just, like I said, I break that down monthly and estimate revenues. And then the same thing for the expenses. And then I record that to you every month of what was our actual for that particular month preceding the month that we're in. And so, again, I just think that it's important for everyone to understand that the board is tracking this and looking at this on a monthly basis. We look at this internally. I look at this every single month, and I study it and evaluate it. And I make sure, are we on plan or are we not on plan? And if we're not, what's the reason? So that I can report that to you if there's any questions. And so we're not going to wait until November or May to talk about this again. We actually see this information every single month. So just to take you through that monthly plan here a little bit, so this is, again, the financial master plan, and I've highlighted a number there, and it's the $111 million in revenue. And so this translates to a monthly look. You can see that very top line there. There's numbers across there all for every single month about how much revenue we're going to collect. And the green highlighted cell or circled cell matches that $111 million that we've been talking about. And then it's broken down into property taxes, state funding, our rollback, and then any other revenue that we receive. And so just to kind of highlight and just to zoom in here a little bit on one section, we're going to just talk a little bit about property taxes. For July, I had estimated we would receive about $30 million in August, $5 million, and then the remainder of our first half collection, that we would get that in September. Well, for July, we actually collected almost $33 million, so we were overestimate. And then in August, we didn't get anything. And that's all timing from the county auditor. I don't get to dictate when they're going to send us money. It all depends on when individuals pay their tax bills and how quickly or how soon they can send the revenue to us. So we did receive our final settlement in September, and so you'll see a catch-up in next month. In October, you'll see that revenue kind of flush out a little bit. And so taxes is one that really can be up and down. And so as long as it's just timing, you're probably not going to hear from me, it would be if for some reason we didn't get it. And so an example of that there is on that, if you look throughout to November, that historical number from 2021, that was a huge outlier, and that had to do with COVID and the county auditor's office ability to, you know, be in the office and to collect the revenue timely. And we were just really, really late that year in getting our tax settlement. So that's not normal. We usually get it October at the latest, but I wanted to use this just as an illustration for tonight. So then we'll move on to the expenses. And so again, this is the financial master plan. $115 million, I mentioned that, that's circled there in the green box. And then on to the next slide, you can see that same $115 million, this section of expenses is below the revenue section on that one sheet report that you receive from me every month, this monthly rolling report. And so the same thing applies. It's broken down by wages, benefits, and then we lump everything else together, call it educational support, and then estimate that monthly. Wages and benefits are very easy to estimate from a monthly standpoint. The educational support, where, you know, we usually fluctuate a little bit up and down in those. Again, it just depends on the timing of when things are purchased and when payments are made. But to zoom in a little bit on the wage section, you can kind of see there in September, it looks like we're going to have a really large outflow. That's because we have a third pay in the month of September. We have that happen twice a year. And so that's one way that you can kind of check and look to see just how fluid the expenses can be. That is what I have for you this evening, unless you have some questions for me.
Laura, could you just emphasize again on the state, you know, the revenue, how much did you have percentage?
It's about 12%.
12%. Want to make sure everyone in the public understands why we come out for levies on a regular basis when the state only gives us 12% of our budget.
Yes. And we're on a guarantee, and I think that we'll likely always be on a guarantee that every funding model, whether the Fair School Funding Plan stays in existence or whether it turns into something else next July, it's almost always based on property value and income, wealth in the community. And so Centerville has high wealth and high property values throughout, you know, Washington Township and Centerville.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just get a curriculum update, please?
Good evening. We wanted to share about the state report card for 2022. They have been released on the state website, and this year, one of the changes is that there's no overall rating. There's just ratings of the individual components. That overall rating will happen next year. This year's report card represents a switch from grades to stars. And so you'll see five stars, four stars, three stars instead of the ABCs or the ratings, that's what happened. There are changes both to what was included in the calculations for some components and how the components were calculated. We'll kind of highlight those as we go through. And so just to reiterate, like there were, this report card is out, and there's things that have changed from the previous year.
And as Shree just mentioned, it is out for the public, and so you can search all Ohio schools' report cards. I will say, we have a screenshot here of one of the overview pages, but you can click in. It's pretty user-friendly for anybody who would like to look at, but you can click in and get pretty deep into some of the information. That's all the report card.
So we're going to work through each of the components. The first one is achievement, which has been part of the report card from the beginning. This measures student achievement, looking at how students did on the Ohio State test. What is this, what represents the switch this year is this component is only leading measured on the performance index. And so that's where we get points for students who score advanced plus, advanced accomplished. We get more than one point for those students because they're scoring above an expected rate. We get one point for proficient and then a little bit reduced for basic and limited. What is just included for information is the percent of students who achieve proficient and higher on each of those tests. And so that is included in the information, but not calculated in the rating.
The second measure we're going to go over tonight is progress. So where achievement is looking at proficiency rates, progress is an attempt by the state to look at how much students are growing from year to year, right? So student could be below proficient, but it's grown a lot, or could be above proficient, and then we want to know, are we growing now? And progress is an attempt to capture that. So progress is looking at historical data for students who have taken many OSTs over the year and looking at whether or not they are meeting, exceeding, or below expected growth on assessments. And you see that we see five stars for that. We believe that that's pretty representative of what we're seeing in the information that we're monitoring all the time, especially over the last year.
I'm sorry. Under progress, is that measuring our sixth graders, for example, of this year against our sixth graders of last year? Or is it measuring our sixth graders from last year as seventh graders this year?
It's really looking at like individual students. It's saying, the state kind of starts putting them into buckets. Okay, so this, students who performed in this percentile, so they'll put them in quartiles or quintiles, and they'll say, you know, these students have historically kind of been in maybe the middle of 20% of students. And then they will look at how those students grow over their years. So they're kind of, they're comparing it historically when this student was a third grader, where we're at. Now, where they're a fourth grader, fifth grader, or sixth grader, and they're looking at that progress over time.
So the next area is called gap closing, and it's similar but different for progress. And so this is where, if you look at the subgroups there at the bottom, it's looking at our all-student subgroup, and do the other subgroups grow at the same rate as the all-student group? And in most cases, they're performing below the all-students, and so there's targets to work over the next few years of getting them to be even with the all-students. And we exceeded all of those targets in this measure. It looks at, it gives several different pieces. The Gifted Performance Index, it looks at chronic absenteeism, it looks at the English language proficiency, graduation goals by subgroup, and then it also looks at ELA and math achievement, and then ELA and math progress. And so it kind of looks at all those pieces and looks at the different subgroups compared to the whole and how they do.
It's an attempt to look at the equity of our programs, right? Are we meeting the needs of many different groups of students?
And so the next measure is the early literacy measure, and this is looking at the reading improvement of our K-3 students. It has actually three components to it, and one of those is the improving K-3 literacy. And that's where it takes our students who are not on track and looks at how we do at getting them on track. On that part of the measure, we get no credit for the fact that we have like 80% of our third graders that test on track at the beginning of the year. It's just looking at that subgroup of students who are struggling. Then it also takes into consideration our proficiency rate in third grade reading and our promotion to fourth grade, which was at 100% last year.
Could I ask a question, please? When we're testing third graders at the beginning of third grade, what that, those students are really ahead, if you will, of where they should be? Am I right?
So when we give the Ohio, we give the Ohio State Third Grade Proficiency, or State Test in November, October, November, it is over year-end standards. And so when we give that assessment, we have lots of students who score that promotion or proficient score. In a theory, they are, they are ahead. When we're testing at the beginning of the year, we're giving diagnostic assessments. And so we do have some students who are behind. We have lots of students who are ahead of where they want to be. And in that measure, they get multiple chances to pass that.
Thank you. So the next component is graduation. This one we're pretty familiar with. It's kind of been around for a while, but this is looking at our four-year graduation code work, and this is, this information is always a year behind. So for this year's report card, we're actually looking at the class of 21, not the students who you guys all show cancer, as they received their diplomas last spring, I was a year before. So four-year graduation rate, the fifth-year graduation rate would then be the class of 20, and they're looking at, okay, so we didn't get some students over the line in 21, or I'm sorry, in 20, did they graduate by the end of 21? And we've historically scored really well. It is important to note that we do have a really great special education program that helps students transition to the workforce and other opportunities after high school. In order for some of our students, or well, for any of our students to participate in that after their senior year, they have to decline their diploma. That's part of just the rules. And so half of our students, roughly half of our students who don't graduate each year tend to be, or are in that program. So it's important to note that if you factor that in, we've really helped the graduation numbers, and it's a testament to our program all the way through, but also the work here at Centerville. All right. And the last component, which we talked about at the work session a little bit, and we have a little bit of an update, is the college career workforce and health area readiness rating. Officially, this rating will not be officially calculated and released until the 24, 25 school year. If you go onto the site, you'll see some numbers there. And timing was really good. Shree and I had the opportunity to meet with many curriculum directors across the region, and for that meeting, they brought in some of the people from ODE and the Office of Accountability. And a lot of people had a lot of questions because there's a lot of numbers out there that are not being included in this report currently. So there were a lot of questions, and they reassured us that they were aware of that. They feel that they're in a hard place with federal law, which requires them to report on this. And so you'll see numbers, but they are working on some messaging to help us message that it is incomplete. But these are things that they're looking at, programs like ACT, how many students are scoring above that remediation level, AP scores, college credit plus, industry credentials, anything that may be considered getting a student ready in addition to the regular curriculum after high school. So everything from college prep to career readiness has kind of been, it's kind of been tight. We're working on that. So as we've processed that and received a little more information, and there's still not a technical document that's been released to say how they're going to finalize these numbers, but as we process that, I think we'll have a couple more conversations with the board about this component and, you know, what effect that could have on some programming and whether, you know, there's a couple different directions we can go. Maybe a long-winded way of saying, it's not official yet, it's not finalized yet, but there is some preliminary information.
So that will be part of the overall grade or score in 24, 25?
Yeah, this will be, this will be scored like the other components.
And so also included on the report card are a variety of other informational items, some that are scored and some that are there for information. One of the other ones that is scored is the gifted indicator. And it takes into consideration progress our gifted students make, students make, the Gifted Performance Index, or how well they score on the different assessments, and then our identification and service of our gifted students. And you can earn five points for each of those areas, and we were able to accumulate all of those points in the center. And so that is kind of the brief synopsis of the report card. We think it reflects the hard work that our teachers and students are doing to rebound from the last few years, and definitely is a positive direction. We always know there's room for growth, and we continue that work, but just my initial note.
Thank you.
Next item, school safety.
So good evening. Just an exciting time just to really advertise and share with the community about our first school safety presentation that we have scheduled for next week. It'll be on Wednesday, October the 5th, right here at Centerville High School in the Central Theater, sponsored by Centerville Safe and with the Central Police Department to come in and train us in Run, Hide, Fight. Run, Hide, Fight is a program that's sponsored by the Miami Valley Crime Prevention Association. How it's kind of evolved is we went through our administrative training back in August. First part of the training, we really focused on school safety for the school year. John Davis with the Central Police Department came in, trained all of our administrators in the Run, Hide, Fight program. It was an excellent presentation. We felt like it was important for not only our administrators, but important for our students and staff to go learn that as they got the school year started. And now we have the opportunity to present that to folks in the community who may be interested in learning more about our school safety protocols. So that's scheduled for next week. We have some other presentations that we have scheduled throughout the year, but this will be our first program. We plan to kick off next week at 7:00 here at the Miami School in Central Theater.
Thanks. We're going to move on to treasurer's recommendation. Consider approving the August 2022 financial statements, the monthly general fund rolling report, monthly cash reconciliation, monthly fund activity report, bid and now purchase orders approved by administration, certified by the treasurer, and supported by the board resolution, totaling $8,324.78.
So moved.
Second. May I have the roll call, please, Ms. Sauber? Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach? Yes. Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks? Yes. Consider approving the minutes of the following Board of Education meeting, August 28, 2022, regular meeting, September 29, 2022, work session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Sauber, could you call the roll, please? Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach? Yes. Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks? Yes. Consider approving the fiscal year 2023 permanent appropriations by fund totaling
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Sauber, can I have the roll, please? Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach? Yes. Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks? Yes. The next items are the superintendent recommendations. The first one is Schedule A. The superintendent recommends accepting resignations as listed on Schedule A. Schedule B, the superintendent recommends the employment, change of employment status or change of contract status for the certified personnel listed on Schedule B, for the salary program, and on the effective dates given. Schedule C, the superintendent recommends the employment or change of employment of employment status for the support staff personnel listed on Schedule C, for the salaries, programs on the effective dates given. And Schedule D, or D1, the superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedules D and D1 for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignment. And Schedule E, the superintendent recommends the granting of leave of absence for the personnel listed on Schedule E for their reason on the dates given.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Sauber, can I have the roll, please? Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach? Yes. Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks? Yes. Schedule D2, the superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedule D2 for supplemental contract or extra duty assignments. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Sauber, can I have the roll, please?
Ms. Sauber, can I have the roll, please?
Mr. Dahl?
Same.
Mrs. Sternbach? Yes. Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes. Item two, consider the approving of the following transportation items, the acceptance of transportation responsibilities for the 2022, 2023 school year from the district and for the student listed.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Sauber, can I have the roll, please?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach? Yes. Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes. Are there any final comments regarding past or old business from the board? May I have motion to adjourn, please?
Got it.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach? Yes. Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes. Thank you.